Good evening and welcome to the December 15, 2022 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Lee Cross. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Like Tulane winning a football game, trustee Don Ratan just walked in at the gun. I believe we are all present here this evening, including the cabinet, much of the cabinet here at the table. So, welcome everyone to the meeting. The next item on our agenda is the awards and recognition section, and I will turn it over to President Dr. Andrew Bann.
Thank you Chair Cross. As we've been doing now for many months, the beginning of our meeting, we start with a student. And so, I would like to introduce you to Mila Garza, another one of our fine students. She and I had a wonderful conversation, although brief this time, earlier this week, and so I think you'll enjoy getting to know her a little bit. So, Mila, so glad to have you here with us.
Hi, I'm Mila. I've been at JCC for going on four now, years now. I leave in actually like 10 days to move on to UMKC. I've been studying, I studied applied nutrition, so dietetics with the food and beverage management over on the hospitality side. Worked in a hospital for a year, didn't like it, gave me the opportunity to switch my degree, come back, and now I have an associate of general science to be able to move on to UMKC with. I've been a student life ambassador for the last three years, and prior to that, I was on the Junior Olympic Culinary Team.
Any questions for Mila? Any questions for Mila? Trustee Smith Edwards.
Mila, tell us what made you choose JCCC?
So, actually, yeah. It's ranked number, I think, three in the nation whenever I switched from high school here for culinary colleges across the world. I got accepted into the Culinary Institute of America. New York was a little far away from home and from my little siblings, so I really wanted to stay closer to home to be able to watch my little sister graduate and like stay in her life and be present. So, I picked Johnson County because it was 35 minutes away from home, number three in the nation, and then I auditioned for the Junior Olympic Culinary Team because I loved competing in high school in culinary and got accepted on the team, and so that really kind of solidified it because I still got to travel, be close to home, and still got to compete. And then, switching, obviously price was a very big thing, especially for switching your degree and not truly knowing what you want to do yet, and so staying with price and then being able to transfer.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mila, thank you for choosing Johnson County and sticking with it, and you're close to the real Manhattan. It's only two hours west.
Manhattan.
Thirty-five minutes away. Where'd you go to high school?
Staley High School. I'm in the Northland. I'm right next to the airport.
Oh, great. Well, we love it, and we love that we have a metro rate to help students like from Staley and other Missouri high schools come here at a lower cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mila? I have just two things. My wife has a very similar story, only via graphic design. She loved New York, and I said, yeah, everybody does, live in like a princess in Midtown, but it's a whole different story when you live in Upper Manhattan. I went to UMKC. What made you choose UMKC?
The block school. Honestly, I've had a couple friends transfer over to UMKC, and they were like, come, like just come tour it, come meet with Scott over there and like just see what they have to offer. They're like, I know you want to do marketing, but they're like, the business emphasis with marketing would mean that you could get a job anywhere and then still do marketing. And so, when I went over there, I honestly fell in love with the campus and the diversity that they also have over there. It's very similar to the diversity at Johnson County, so it made me feel very at home.
The law school is right next to the block school, and we had classes in block, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the open forum, and we do not have anybody. Nevertheless, I'm going to read my favorite part of the meeting here and say that the open forum is an agenda item at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers wanting to make public comment via Zoom webinar must register by completing the registration form by 5:00 PM the day before the scheduled Board of Trustees meeting. Speakers must provide their name, city residence, name of any group they are representing. The topic of discussion, it looks like a pharmaceutical ad, like, in a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation as well as the email address and the phone number the speaker will be using to access the Zoom meeting. The Zoom link and the conference number will be listed on the JCCC Board Meetings page. Registered speakers should be familiar with the Zoom functionality before logging into the Board of Trustees meeting. Registered speakers should wait until called upon by the chair, pleased to speak, at which time the recognized speaker will be granted electronic access to address the board. Speakers wanting to make public comment in person must register through this form by 5:00 PM the day before or in person 15 minutes before the start of this meeting outside of this room, GEB 137. Each registered speaker is allowed to five minutes to speak unless, if there is a significant number of speakers registered, the time will be reduced at the discretion of the chair. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked, pleased, to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Comments may not inflict or threaten harm, cause a breach of any peace, consist of fighting words incite individuals to commit a crime or cause a panic, and we ask you, pleased, to refrain from obscenity or defamation. The Chair of the Board, of course, again, has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in a board meeting, and we have no speakers today. I think I covered everything here, right? Kelsey has this written out, so I have, I know what to do in any situation, so thank you. That concludes the open forum section. The next item on our agenda here is Board Reports, and we will start with the Student Senate Report by Daniel Gonzalez. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so the first thing I'll start off with is our Secretary Mila will be leaving us from Student Senate going over to UMKC. So, our new Secretary for Student Senate is Kinley Chapel. For student clubs and organizations, we've had one funding request since our last, since my last board report. The JCSVA requested to go to the National Conference, a national conference, and for our JCCC gives announcement, it was an overall success. We had approximately 300 gifts, and all of them were delivered, and we raised over $2,000. For our overall, for the Student Senate Funding Review for this semester, the number of people we, Student Senate funded was 723, and the number of events that Student Senate funded was 10. That's all I have for you guys today. Thank you for having me.
Any questions for Daniel? Any questions for Daniel? Is that, is 10 a good number of events? Is that usual?
Yeah, it's a pretty good number of events. It's about how much we get usually in the fall semester.
Well, good. Happy holidays.
You too.
Thanks for being here.
Congratulations on a good semester.
Enjoy your break.
Dr. Bann wants me to keep moving, so I don't have time for jokes, sorry. The college lobbyist report is our next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're wrapping up the legislative year as far as interim committees are concerned, and most importantly, some of the things that have been occurring over the past couple of weeks are leadership elections and appointments to committees, and so I'll talk a little bit about that this evening. We have a very South Central-led House of Representatives, and that's going to pair up with a very South Central Kansas-led Senate. If you're catching what I'm saying here, not a lot of Northeast Eastern side of Kansas representation in leadership positions in either body. We do have a majority leader, Chris Croft, who will be setting the tone or the agenda, if you will, for the House of Representatives, but even when we start looking to committee appointments, which were announced late last week, we have three committees chaired by Johnson County Representatives, Commerce, Labor, and Economic Development, and that's a returning chairmanship by Representative Tarwater. The House Education Committee will be chaired by Adam Thomas, and the House Insurance Company will be chaired by Bill Sutton. So, you know, we have quite a few committees in the State House, but only three are presently chaired by Johnson County reps. When we look at appropriations and some other key committees that we follow and that we participate in the process with in Topeka, we have three Johnson County reps on appropriations, two of which I've already named, Representative Sutton and Tarwater, and then incoming Representative Adam Turk will sit on appropriations. Zero Johnson County reps currently on the Higher Education Budget Committee, and two Johnson County reps on taxation, another committee that is fairly key in the things that we follow as far as the impact college business. That'll change a little bit. Democrats have not announced their committee membership yet, and so there, we will likely pick up some area representation on those committees once the minority of party makes their appointments to those committees. Just for the purposes of information, we'll start to see some other changes in state government. We've had two Cabinet Secretaries announce their resignation or retirement. Transportation is Julie Lorenz, and Department of Administration is D'Angelo Burns Wallace. We'll see, likely see some other Cabinet Secretaries vacate those positions. That's very common when you have a governor that's elected to a second term. The timing isn't, we don't always know the timing, but we can anticipate that we will see some changes in those areas. The only reason I mention that is because it represents another learning curve, and for those agencies that we work with or deal with, there's always that sort of that learning curve to get folks back up to speed. Let's talk a little bit about action at the Kansas Board of Regents. You'll recall that last month, we spent some time talking about the affiliation proposal as a result of numerous conversations, meetings, and get togethers. This morning, the affiliation bill was not offered or acted upon in today's Board of Regents meeting. That means it won't be coming, if we see a bill like that, it won't be coming as an endorsement from the Kansas Board of Regents. So, that was good news as far as a follow-up from last month's report. Nursing is going to continue to get more interesting. We still have the reimbursement issues. Those are on hold for right now. It's interesting, some of the talks that are going on amongst industry groups specifically as it relates to apprenticeships or including the lowering of the number of hours for training for CNAs, and so that's something that we're, those will be some proposals that we'll likely be seeing in the legislative process, and we're watching those very closely. We learned this afternoon that there is a hospital in Wichita that intends to offer its own nursing program. That's a departure from what we've seen as far as there are partnerships that exist, but that would be a departure from what we've seen in the past. And then, we're also hearing a possible consolidation of health licensing and credentialing boards. On the face, that sounds okay. Anytime you're consolidating, there could be good things that come out of it. I know we talked about that also last month, but with regard to, this is just coming up, seeing where that goes and dealing with already slow to respond agencies, that could be an interesting one. We haven't seen anything concrete about that just yet. That just came to light this afternoon. We'll see issues for the next session such as medical marijuana, lots of tax issues such as a flat tax proposal, property tax issues, food sales tax issues that will continue to march to zero, possibly there will be a proposal to take the stair steps out and just move it to zero. We'll see issues related to education, and all of the social issues will be back for discussion in the legislative process. So, those are some of the big points that we'll see. Finally, we're nearing the end of our legislative series. By tomorrow, we will have met collectively with about 19 members of the Johnson County Legislative Delegation. That's a good turnout. Some years, we've not come anywhere near close to that, and that's with continued follow-up and reminders of our various events that we hold. We're taking steps to shore up meetings with other key individuals that haven't been able to make it to our meetings or have not responded, and our goal is to have those meetings scheduled before the end of the year, before the legislature, before the legislature starts. So, we'll continue to work on that, but I think, Mr. Chair, that kind of captures everything that is up to date that is also not, I didn't really talk about specifics in the report. These are all new items that have come up since the report was turned in.
Mr. Carter, thank you, and I believe it's Kate Allen, who helps organize the lunches and the breakfasts?
Yeah, Kate. Kate's operation takes care of that legwork on the backend as far as sending out letters and things like that, and then we follow up together with different members of the delegation.
Thank you for doing that. Any questions for Mr. Carter?
Remind me the total number of our delegation now, House and Senate together.
I knew somebody would ask that. Kate says 35.
Total?
Combined.
House and Senate?
House and Senate combined.
So, we had 19, so we're a little over half.
And there have been years when we've not been close to half.
Thank you for working that. I'm always disappointed that we don't get a better response. I know that people are busy, and it's the holiday season, and they're getting ready for the session.
They don't know who you are. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Dick, I'd just like to note, with respect to Bunker Hill, Kansas, where Representative Troy Waymasters from, isn't that Russell County?
I think it is Russell, yeah.
Wasn't there some famous politician from Russell?
Couple. There were two.
Two, actually, two US Senators from Russell. And my mother is from Rooks County, right next door. My mother-in-law is from Nest City, about an hour from there, which is two hours from Coldwater where Representative Kyle Hoffman's from, so I just wanted to say that I have ties out there, and we sure appreciate them serving in the legislature.
We do too.
Before I ramble on, trustee Ingram has something.
Can you just elaborate a little bit more about the hospital in Wichita that is planning to have their own school?
I'm not sure that I can. We just learned this this afternoon, and it is definitely South Central-led, and it is one particular group that is a large managing group for hospitals, and so there are other hospital properties, not only in this state but across the nation, and so we're not sure if that's an emerging trend that we're going to start seeing. We've already had some conversations coming out of the Kansas Hospital Association that we're a part of, and so I think we're going to have to wait until we get some more information to kind of just see exactly what that's shaping up to look like.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Cross.
Yes, Mr. Trustee.
We talked last week, last month about that affiliation proposal that we thought was going to be promoted by the Board of Regents, and we, and I appreciate your including it, the draft bill in your, in your thing, and I don't, you probably can't predict whether that's coming, going to come out anyway, even though the Board of Regents didn't officially put it on their agenda.
So...
But I'd just say, having read it now, it would have been an absolute exercise in futility in my mind, because every community college that wanted to affiliate with somebody would have, the board would have voted themselves out of existence for every purpose except levying taxes, and they still would have been elected, and their only role would have been to set the mill lift, to support the affiliating university. I don't know who came up with a system that thought that would work, and I hope it doesn't come back. I said last month, I'm not against affiliations. I'm not against talking about consolidating and not duplicating programs statewide, but I'm really, I won't say anything more about it. I just think that was an absurd proposal, and I'm glad the Regents did not...
That's why I brought it up last month. Those were the points that I brought up.
It's hard to filter the absurd things you bring up sometimes, Dick. I'm kidding, of course.
I do concur, and it seemed like it was something of a corporate takeover bill. It just would allow a region school to come in and take it over, and I've always enjoyed saying things nobody else will.
But the community college boards would have had to said, say, okay.
Right.
Come in and take us over and take all of our local control and all of our local voting power away, and I just don't, I just don't know who thought that would ever happen, so I'm glad.
I could say names, but I will not say that. On that bill, the bill has been, not withdrawn, but it was, it was a trial balloon floated by cable.
It was not recommended for introduction as part of their package of non-budgetary legislative items.
What are the odds, Mr. Carter, that we see that bill again in some form?
It's Topeka.
In your experience?
Nothing ever dies.
Nothing's dead.
No.
It's like marble. I'll tell you what.
No, my kids can probably tell me.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you for being here. And the next item on our agenda is the Faculty Association Report by Professor Brett Cooper.
Thank you, trustee Cross. We've made it through the fall semester. It is done, grades are in. It was good to be back on campus with colleagues and students. It was great to have a buzz around campus for the first time in too long. We look forward to our first somewhat normal spring coming up in 2023 since 2019 in the coming weeks, so, but we're looking forward to a well-deserved rest. What we found out this semester is that being back on campus with all cylinders firing takes a lot of work, and it was something that we weren't all used to after being mostly online for two years, so we're ready for rest and to get back for spring and have a full go at a full spring. So, one of the things that this time provides is for me to let you know what the faculty are thinking about, and as we move into the 2023, what we're thinking about is many, many questions. Will Dr. McLeod, moving to the new provost position, with that happening, will he remain CAO? If not, will there be a national search for a CAO? What does the change mean to the ABC, to faculty representation in the cabinet, and to shared governance generally? Why wasn't the change run through shared governance to begin with? What is happening with the search for the new HR VP, I'm sorry, the new VP of HR, the Student Success VP, now the COO? When will we see the diversity office filled? With so much turnover in senior leadership, the college is at the dawn of a new era. The Board and administration have an opportunity to work with our shared governance structures to demonstrate their commitment to shared governments as these decisions that affect the future of the college are made. A related decision is what you're faced with the beginnings of tonight. I do not envy the task that you have as trustees this evening. Just as the change in senior level administration will have a profound effect on the culture of the college, the decisions you're about to make with regard to the open trustee seat will also have an effect. We applaud the transparency of the process that you're about to take part in, and we urge the administration to be as inclusive and transparent as possible as they move to fill the several vacancies that are critical roles here at the college, and that's what's on the minds of the faculty these days. Thank you for the time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Professor Cooper. Any questions for Professor Cooper? Brett, I'll say this, I thank you for your comments, and I'm sorry I was late to collegial steering yesterday. I'm sorry you had to sit at another table at some enchanted evening. I apologize for that. That happened. But the faculty and I have shared a table for years, and I have campaigned three times on shared governance, and I can say, sitting in this chair and working closely with the President is an entirely different operation, and I do think it is an exciting time for us to be able to make choices and changes, which I choose to look at rather than being overwhelmed by it, because it is daunting. So, I appreciate your attention to those details. It hasn't escaped trustee Ingram and I's attention especially, nor the other trustees, so they're very good questions, they're very good issues, and I thank you for raising them, so.
Thank you for the time.
You're very welcome. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle by trustee Musel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We haven't had a meeting since our October 31 Halloween meeting, but the sales tax receipts continue to be very strong and greater than last year. Year-to-date through November, we are up 16.1% over last year. As you'll recall, that generated from a 1/8 cent sales tax countywide and split between the KU Cancer Clinic, the KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State Olathe Campus. So, as I mentioned before, inflation has an effect on sales taxes, and so each of those entities is benefiting some from that, and JSearch's Board is to monitor it and make sure it goes to the programs that were approved by the voters in 2008.
Right. Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Thank you, former Chair, Mr. Trustee Musel. That is good news in spite of inflation, though. 16% is still high, I mean up, and then, do any of those funds, they get to use that for like Olathe Health or any of the other initiatives at KU Med or?
Well, it's limited to the cancer program at KU Med, which helped get the NCI designation and affiliation. It's limited to KU Edwards on certain programs that they can add, and then K-State Olathe has a limited authority that was expanded slightly last year by the legislature, but it does not go to likely Olathe, any of the local health systems beyond the Cancer Center at KU.
Very good. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Trustee. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees by the President of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, trustee Ingram.
May we say President for just like two more weeks?
Well, it still counts.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and include some highlights. We did meet in Coffeyville on December 2nd and 3rd. The trustees were joined by Congressman Roger Marshall to discuss federal policy issues. As a proud community college alumni and former track star athlete at Butler, Congressman Marshall expressed how proud he was of Kansas community colleges and what a vital role community colleges play in the Kansas economy. Heather Morgan presented on the 2022 Kansas Chamber Workforce Survey results and the results of a workforce study from the Kansas Department of Agriculture. Both suggest community colleges need to continue to market how we can help businesses meet their workforce needs. The survey shows that businesses are not aware of some of the programs we have which may be able to help them. Regent Carl Ice from the Kansas Board of Regents joined the group and provided an excellent overview of the Kansas Board of Regents' strategic plan. He also shared how his time as a football player at Coffeyville shaped his career as he rose to the CEO of BNSF Railroad. He also talked about how as CEO of BNSF, they made the decision that Johnson County Community College would serve as their training arm and how JCCC is training their employees from across the country. KACC officer elections were held with Arlen Liker, president of Colby, Don Ash, vice president from KCK, Eric Kilo from Secretary, excuse me, Secretary from Pratt, and David Marshall from Treasury, from Hutch's Treasury, I'm sorry, and Nancy Ingram, past president of Johnson County Community College, were unanimously elected by the group. The group also voted on who to recommend as the Kansas Community College representative to the Technical Education Authority. The person unanimously approved subsequently determined that they were, due to unforeseen circumstances, not able to serve. So, our executive committee met along with the presidents and are nominating David Rice, who is the former Highland Community College president, to serve in this role. So, we are actually able to name one person, and David Rice from Highland, the former president, will be that person that we nominate. Heather Morgan presented on the new high school graduation requirements recently approved by the State Board of Ed to go into effect starting with this year's eighth grade class. The biggest changes are requiring the completion of the FAFSA unless a student opts out, including a personal finance class, some changes related to PE and health, as well as requiring at least one semester of a communications or public speaking type of course. Heather also presented on the Lumina Report related to fewer number of Kansas high school graduates pursuing higher education, and the recent Docking Institute Kansas Speaks Survey related to Kansas feeling, and how they feel about higher education. It was clear that Kansas don't understand that community colleges are doing 80% of the technical education. Heather Morgan presented on upcoming legislative issues, including changes related to healthcare licensing, education, some of the things that we just heard about from Dick Carter, payments for training healthcare employees, and a bill which the Board of Regents is considering related to voluntary affiliations of higher education institutions. And I mentioned that again, although we know it's not being included, but both the presidents and the trustees voted unanimously to oppose that bill. The group then voted to approve the KACC legislative platform, and we concluded at noon on Saturday. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam President. Any questions for trustee Ingram? Any questions for trustee Ingram? Trustee Smith Everett, yes.
Thank you, two questions. One is the board voted unanimously against the bill that we were discussing with Mr. Carter that was, I brought up, okay, just want to clarify that.
The presidents and the trustees who were present.
And then, second of all, could we get a copy of the legislative platform that was adopted?
Sure. I thought we had already sent that out earlier this year in August, but we can do that.
From K, I didn't think.
From KACC.
Get it out this weekend. Yeah, I missed it too.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. I'd just like to look over it.
Oh, no, that's fine. And it pretty much coordinates with what we do here.
Hopefully, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for trustee Ingram? Senator Marshall went to Butler?
Yes, evidently. And that's, you know, that's one of the really good things that KACC continues to do is to provide those opportunities for relationships to be created. So Carl Ice stayed through the evening, the first night, and was at the dinner.
Carl Ice is a former CEO.
He is, yes, and he is on the Board of Regents. So, you know, in meeting with Board of Regents yesterday morning, I guess, you know, just to have those relationships being established is just what it's all about, so.
That's exciting.
Yep, it is. It's good stuff.
Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is a foundation report from trustee Ratan.
Good evening, everyone. At the conclusion of the Sum Enchanted Evening fundraiser, a survey was sent to all the attendees, and the event got great reviews. A summary of the findings are 86% overall event rating is excellent or very good, 37% of respondents were first-time event-goers, students were rated, the students that presented were rated 89% exceptional or great, 71% rated the program exceptional or great, 82% rated the video elements exceptional or great, and kudos to our video production staff, 62% said the length of the live program was just right. So save the date right now in your calendars for November 11th of 2023. We also are going to send out a call for the Johnson County End of the Year for nominations, and so look for that as well. The foundation collaborated with the marketing department to send out an end-of-the-year appeal to past donors to encourage them to make a gift before the end of the year. The mailing included a partnership with a culinary program, so everyone who got the mailing gets a certificate for pastry from our culinary area, and is to show appreciation to our donors and an incentive to visit our campus. If you'd like, we can send out the direct mail piece with the details if you'd like to see it. Spring semester scholarships. The foundation's spring semester scholarships are being awarded, and 2023-2024 JCCC scholarship application is open. There's a great story about the importance and impact of our scholarships that was on KSHB, 41 News, and again, we can send that link out as well if you'd like to see it. And for the spring, the foundation is hosting a spring scholarship luncheon. We'd love for trustees to attend, so please save that date of April 11th, 2023, in the Capitol Federal Room. More details to follow. If you haven't seen it, the foundation has updated their logo and webpages. The JCCC Foundation is excited to reveal this updated logo to help differentiate the college from the foundation. It's a really cool logo, and it says JCCC but in very artistic way, so check that out. They collaborated with the marketing team to refresh the webpages that are inside of our college website. The final version is live, and if you'd like to see it, it's at jccc.edu/foundation. The updated site allows donors to easily navigate to where they want to go, and is also action-oriented with a goal of making it easier to obtain online gifts. And that is the conclusion of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Any questions for trustee Ratan? Any questions for trustee Ratan? Don, thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on our report is a report from the College Council by Jason Ornette.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jason Ornette. I'm the manager for the retail dining operations here at the college during the day, and it's my honor to be the chair of the College Council, which last met on December 7th. And after we received updates from the other governance bodies, because we're all one big group together, we resumed our discussion from the previous month about communication issues that had been raised up from the staff council. There were enough issues that we felt a subcommittee needed to be formed, and so we're going forward with that. There will be faculty, staff, and students represented in that subcommittee. We're going to talk about some broad topics like barriers to communication, feedback, communication tools, and perhaps training needs. So everybody's voice is going to be really, really important. We're going to encourage the subcommittee to seek out a wide variety of comments and information, hopefully maybe even case study-type things. So it's a huge project. It's going to take some time to complete. We hope to have a scope of work and the committee itself established in January with monthly updates to follow in this report. Meanwhile, the council will include, continue to include the topic on its agenda. Last month, you all asked me where our minutes are. They do live on the JCC website under the accreditation page, and I am sorry to report that our October and November minutes are not there because we've had some turnover on the committee as well, or on the college council, and I'll make sure that those are up there first of the year. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Jason. And thank you for reminding me what you do. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Forgot.
It's fine.
Any questions for Mr. Ornette? Any trustee Smith Everett?
I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate you being here and providing us with ongoing reports. It's really appreciated.
Absolutely. Glad to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. The next item on our agenda is committee reports and recommendations. The first committee report will be given by myself regarding the audit committee. We did meet on Monday, December 12th, and the new audit charter was presented, and the audit committee will be recommending it to move to the board in January for approval. Audit presented recent activities, including current requests for proposal for co-sourced audit services, results from recent audits regarding firearms, and biannual travel review for trustees, the cabinet, and selected faculty and staff, including Dr. Bound. There was an annual report on trustee travel, and then we had a follow-up on remediation plans for past audits on both operational and IT. A quarterly update was provided on the ethics hotline cases. The committee determined the meeting schedule for the remainder of 2023. We will probably continue to meet on a different day due to the number of things to discuss in that committee that traditionally and by custom has been done by the chair and vice chair. The committee decided on the working agenda shifting the performance review of the audit director and the audit and advisory services to coincide with the one-year hire to date for the director, and that's through the advice of HR and in keeping with general college practice. So we'll review Heather at that time. Any questions regarding the audit committee? Any questions? Yeah.
I would just like to, I couldn't see Heather back there, but I know she's back there, and that was the first time she led an audit committee meeting for us, and we were all a little rusty, but thank you very much. It was really a good start to the audit committee meeting.
She means I was brand-new, so thank you for being here.
We were all brand-new seated up here at the table, and Chair Cross brought that to my attention. He said, you know, you're the only one who's ever been to an audit committee. I know there's people out in the crowd who have observed them before, but, you know, when you really stop and think about the newness of those committee members, it's brand-new to everyone. So it was a good meeting, and I knew you were a little concerned about it, but I wanted to reassure you, you did a great job. So thank you very much for your leadership.
Great is with time. It was good. It was good. And thank you. And Professor Cooper's right, there's a lot, there's been a lot of change, turnover. I think it's obvious, so we might as well address it. And trustee Ingram was, in fact, the only person at the dais that had sat in a previous HR meeting, so thank you very much to everyone who attended. The next item on our agenda is the collegial steering report, and I will turn it over to trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Collegial steering met yesterday afternoon. We actually had two items on the agenda, but the first one gathered such a robust discussion that we only got through one agenda item, and that was faculty burnout. And I will just say that in responding to that meeting, possible and probable causes were shared, and solution to combat burnout were also given. There was general agreement that faculty engagement is a priority, and so just trying to figure out a way to engage faculty and encourage their involvement on our campus was certainly a priority that we want to continue to address. With so many opportunities for faculty and staff to become involved, we want them to consider ways that they might serve on a committee or a task force. We talked about identifying individuals and matching them with opportunities that best fit them. That was another suggestion that was given. And then we were all encouraged to consider, to continue to consider ways to work together on this goal. It was noted, and I think really appropriately, that burnout is not solely a college issue. It's a general issue at this time. So we're all reminded, we reminded one another, and just as Brett mentioned earlier, you know, we've got a holiday coming up. Take time to unplug, take time to relax, take time to focus on self-care. Chair Cross said, make sure you drink plenty of water, get exercise. You know, there are all those things that we need to remind ourselves of. So it seems very simplistic when we're talking about it, but I think there was, it was a great discussion, and a lot of good things were brought up. So, you know, to hear you mention that today, I mean, I, we don't have any solutions, but we know that self-care and your self-care for all of us seated in this room and a part of this college and a part of our county and our world, we just need to take really good care of ourselves. So enjoy that two weeks or more that is coming up. So as the conversation was very interactive, other items were deferred to our January 2023 meeting. So I will conclude with that. There were a number of people who were here. If they have anything to add, certainly, please feel free to do so.
Well, my success is your success, and I've gone well just copying Greg Musel and Jerry Cooks. So Jerry Cooks said, drink water. Professional trainers, personal trainers say that too, so it wasn't my idea.
But you were the one who brought it up, and I think it's, you know.
Well.
We need to remind one another. The other thing is just having a little grace. You know, we talked about grace when we first started, and twisted, and we turned through the pivots that we all made, and I don't hear people talking about grace very much. So just kind of bring that word back into your vocabulary and remind each other of the grace that we need to be giving, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. The next item on our report is the Committee of the Whole report, which trustee Ingram will share with us because she chaired that meeting.
And that word was grace. The committee, this is going to take me a while to get through all this. This is good. The Committee of the Whole was held on Monday, November 28th. Dr. Bound and trustees Nancy Ingram, Laura Smith Everett, Mark Hamel, Greg Musel, and Don Ratan were present. Trustee Lee Cross joined by phone. The meetings are reflected in the board packet on pages 1 through 26. Our first presentation, and I'm just going to highlight a few of these things for people in the audience and listening to us. Matthew Schmier provided a contextual historical review of the development of the Kabor General Education System-wide Transfer Articulation Policy. He provided both the development and implementation timeline for the adoption. Practical examples of how the policy would be administered for students in a number of disciplines were reviewed in collaboration with the Cultural Diversity and General Education Committee. JCC will align the AA, AS, and AFA degrees and rearrange the AGS, General Education Requirements, with the Kabor General Education Policy. The result of this effort will be a more seamless and efficient transfer process for students. Colleges and universities have until 2024 to adopt the General Education Packet. The next item was curriculum, new program update. Andrew Lutz, Chair of Ed Affairs, presented a new program proposal in cloud computing effective for the 2023-24 academic year. The new program will establish foundational information technology and cloud computing Mental health partnership update. Ann Turney, Director of Student Life and Leadership, and Alex Wells, Assistant Dean Counseling, and new student retention, presented an update on mental health at JCC. The presentation included data relevant to student issues around mental health, increase in sessions for personal issues and/or crisis situations, as well as utilization of the two student assistant programs. Alex discussed counselor's committee work and involvement both on and off-campus in regards to mental health. An overview of future plans was provided for continuous cross-campus mental health awareness and skills. Our next agenda item was our policy updates and recommendations. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, we have nine policies with changes noted on page three for your approval. If there are no objections, we would consider all the policies under one recommendation unless someone cares to pull a policy for discussion.
No objection.
Molly, you're going up to the item of the budget guidelines, up to but not including the budget guidelines?
Let me double check, but I believe that's, well, there are nine, there are nine policies. There are the nine policies listed on page three.
Yes.
So yes, that would be correct, as I stumbled over here.
I heard Greg objects. We have to read them.
No, no, not. Go for it.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that, everyone?
Thank you.
Okay. So the recommendation is as follows, Mr. Chair. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the internal and external audit policies 210.05, taxes and tax rates policy 212.01, cost per credit hour policy 212.02, gifts, grants, and external funds policy 212.05, deferred payment plan policy 212.06, framework for investments policy 214.00, soliciting, canvassing, and promoting on-campus policy 318.03, student health policy 321.00, and identity theft prevention policy 540.00 as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I will make that motion.
Second. Motion has been moved by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Musel. Any discussion? Any discussion of this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm on page 18. This is fiscal year 2023-2024 budget calendar and guidelines. Rachel Lear is Associate Vice President of Financial Services, CFO, presented the recommendation to approve preliminary budget guidelines to be used by the administration to begin the fiscal 2023-24 budget development process based on estimated revenues and expenses. These guidelines are subject to adjustment as updated information is received over the coming months, such as changes in estimated assessed valuation or state funding. The final 2023-24 management budget will be presented to the Board of Trustees for approval in May of 2023. The budget calendar for fiscal 2023-24 was presented to the committee on September 26th, 2022, and is included for reference. Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the preliminary guidelines for development of the college's fiscal year 2023-24 budget, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Trustee Musel.
I just want to repeat what I said at the Committee of the Whole, that we build these budget guidelines, I think, conservatively to ensure that we have enough funds to do what we need to do, and we're doing that this year by assuming that the mill levy will stay the same. I am still of the mind that we need to consider reducing the mill levy next year. It will depend a lot on whether it's a 5% valuation increase, or 7%, or 3%, but as I mentioned then, I would love to see more effort on the expense side, understanding that we have 70-plus percent of our costs, our personnel costs, and we know that those are going up for salaries and benefits, and our electric rates will go up and other things. We need to find a, we need to find some efficiencies if they're out there to be found. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Musel. Any other comments? I will just say typically, usually opposite of you on that, and I would prefer that we consider raising the mill due to inflation and because of the market and concerns in this socio-political environment, but I'll probably support this. I do note trustee Musel's concerns with respect to expenses. I mean, it is a concern as the budget keeps rising while... I mean, it is a concern as the budget keeps rising while enrollment does not. So that's, that's a concern. I think people have been in meetings with me, get tired of hearing me say that, inflation and Moneyball. So I think Trustee Muzel's right in part. I do probably dissent as to what we should do with the number, but the gentleman has raised an excellent point that we should be concerned about with respect to a rising budget. So I'll probably support this, but just with the, the note that my preference would be in this inflationary environment that we consider raising the mill, but I just wanted to raise my concern, so. Plus, is there any other comments here? I think the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Trustee.
Yes, thank you. Our next order of business was strategic planning, diversity, equity, and inclusion. An update was presented on the development of strategic planning goal three, diversity, equity, inclusion. Goal three champions Kate Allen and Mike Neal were in attendance, along with goal three strategy co-chairs Larissa Nelson, Tony Hughes, Elektra Garzola, Kristy Howell, and Andrea Vu. Co-chairs reviewed the progress to build out a DEI leadership position on campus, which included completion of a scope of concept document and job description. All campus committees and departments were encouraged to reach out to the co-chairs or champions if interested in additional conversations around this new role on campus in 2023. Regarding our committee structure, Dr. Bowne reviewed the upcoming committee structure with the board. He announced the staff leads for each committee, reviewed a potential meeting frequency, and detailed committee day structure, and a timeline for the remainder of the year. Business services, Janelle Vogler, Chief Vice President, Business Services, reviewed one bid, RFP, for recommendation. The purpose of this RFP is to establish a contract for PCSC, System Software Maintenance Agreement, hardware such as control panels, door readers, hardware parts, as well as support service on an ongoing basis as funding is available. The initial term of the contract will be from December 16th, 2022, through December 15th, 2023, and is renewable for four additional years in one-year increments upon the approval of both parties. Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Midwest Alarm Services for the provision of PCSC, System Software, Hardware, and Support Services for a base year of $95,000 and a total estimated expenditure of $475,000, including the renewal options through 2027. And I will make that motion.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion? I think Trustee Muzel usually does this, and I was by phone, so I didn't want to raise the issue at the time. Why did we go with Midwest Alarm Services and not the low bid of Honeywell? May I ask?
Look, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yep, I'll be happy to answer.
It's somewhat rhetorical, but for the public's education, please.
Absolutely. This particular bid, and it was actually an RFP, and it covered services as well. So there was a slight difference, but there were specific evaluation criteria related to the service they provide in the proposal, and the committee felt that that, the services they provided were a better fit for the college. So it wasn't, it wasn't strictly a price bid.
Yes, ma'am. That would certainly factor in the analysis, and everyone thought that through.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you very, that was my only question.
I know that the difference was .25%. So it...
Well, usually you raise it, I'm just...
Yeah, I don't. I don't raise .25%. It's got to be .3 before I raise it.
Any other questions or concerns on this point? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Trustee.
Yes, the final report is informational items. No questions were raised regarding the informational items provided in the Committee of the Whole packet. So this concludes my Committee of the Whole report. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you for doing that. And I guess I'll note, just for, since we have so many new trustees on the board, as we move into the next segment regarding the nominating committee, each person who chairs these committees, you'll, you'll be expected, frankly, we hope, you'll, you'll present your own report. And one of the goals I had, and I think Trustee Ingram did too, was to displace opportunity and power to more voices and so that you could have a more hands-on approach and a window into the weeds. Dr. Bowne doesn't want us wandering around in the weeds, and nobody does because weeds aren't, you know, productive. They're not a domestic grain. So at any rate, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. And the next item on our agenda is the nominating committee for Trustee Ingram.
That's correct. You will find the slate, and this is the 2023 Board of Trustees Officers, Board Committee Members, and Liaison Slate. Do you want me to read through them?
I don't, I don't know if that's necessary. I think they, they can review that on page 27 there.
Well, hopefully everyone has had a chance to do that. If you'll remember, the nominating committee was myself and Don Ratan. So we met and, you know, just took into account a number of different things, people's expressed interest, their ability and willingness to serve on a certain committee, for example, those kinds of things. So it took us a while to do it, but things kind of fell into place, and I think we're really pleased with what we are presenting for you all this evening. I just appreciate everyone's willingness to serve, and I know Don agrees with me on that. I'm not trying to speak for you.
Agreed.
But, you know, we, we want to remind everyone, you know, about committee day. And Don, I don't know if you have any other things you'd like to share, but committee day, we feel like will be a good opportunity for people to listen in to other committees and learn about them.
I think your word grace is appropriate here, as we're reforming these committees and starting them up to show some grace as we figure out how to make them work.
Moving forward is exciting, and it's something that we've, we've struggled with for a while, but we felt like it was really important for all of us to do. So I appreciate your comments as well, because we, we do have a full group of chairs and people serving on committees that I think will serve as well as we move forward. So anyway, I will go ahead with the recommendation if we're prepared to do that. If there are no questions or concerns, some kind of...
Well, I mean, are you making the motion? Excuse me?
I will be.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the nominating committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023 slate of officers, committees, and liaison assignments as proposed.
Seconded.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion here?
I just wanted to comment that I, as a new trustee in our former committee structure, found that seeing various committees gave me a wider perspective of how one chairs and conducts things and how businesses had differently in each committee. I thought that all committees were run the way Trustee Cook ran things until I learned that there were other styles and other ways, and that's very helpful. And so for everybody that's going to step into a chairmanship here, you get to kind of craft how you want to run things and direct things, and that's a great, a great opportunity for growth and for deciding how, what kind of leader you want to be, because at some point on this board, we will all need to be leaders in different ways. And I look forward to this opportunity returning for those of us to grow and live up to the leaders we hope we can be.
You are.
I'm excited for it, too. Any other comments?
I just, we've talked a lot about the committee and the committee structure. We're keeping the same officers in place, which is our tradition for a second year, but I think it's important for stability, and I want to thank the four officers, starting with Trustee Cross, for agreeing to be, to serve in those positions, because those take work in addition to the committee work. So thank you.
I thank you, and you know better than anybody how much time it takes, so thank you. Any other comments?
I guess to clarify, because I can't remember now the policy we put into place. Is this, will this be each December we will do this, where we vote on our officers and we vote on our committees?
The nominating committee will be named in November.
Each November? Okay, just double checking that that will be our procedure from here on out.
Until we review our policy again.
Yeah, I know. I'll be chairing that, and so we'll...
Elsie's frowning.
It was clumsy, and, and I voted for that way, and I apologize. Thank you to Don and Nancy for being on the nominating committee, and I think Trustee Muzel was on there briefly before we had coma issues, so thank you for briefly serving. Any other comments on this? All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Trustee.
That concludes my report.
Very good. So the next item, and thank you for that, thank you all for that. The next item on our agenda is the President's Recommendations for Actions, beginning with the Treasurer's Report by Treasurer, Trustee Treasurer Laura Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurer's Report can be found on pages 28 through 38 of your packet. The packet includes a month ended October 31st, 2022. Some items of note include page one, which has the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college. It also includes the General Fund Unencumbered Cash Balance, which was $96 million as of October 31st, 2022, a decrease of $7 million from the previous year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended October 31st, 2022, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Muzel. Any discussion? Any discussion? I guess I'll ask, and I may need to ask Rachel, why, why are we down $7 million from the previous year? May I?
She will certainly answer better than I.
I, I could guess, I just would like to hear from you, if I may.
Yeah, sure. And it's largely related to the progress billings on the science lab renovation that are coming out of the general fund.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Could you say it again? I didn't hear you, sorry.
It's the decrease in the general fund reserve balance year over year is largely related to the progress billings on the science lab renovation.
Thank you for that.
Those are coming out of general fund reserves.
I'd just like to note that somebody asked questions, so that we're not just...
Absolutely.
Rubber stamping.
Good question.
Thank you, Vice President.
All right.
The motion is, any other discussion? Excuse me. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no? The motion carries unanimously, and I will now turn it over to President Dr. Andrew Bowne.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, trustees. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and to provide the monthly report. As I begin my report, we have a, a new member at our table here tonight, who's not a new member to this table, but she's back. And so I'd like to thank Dr. Judy Korb for joining us, serving in the interim EVP role for student success, and we're all very glad to have you back. So welcome back. All right, in my report. All right, got just a few things that we'll cover tonight. Again, you get to spend some time with Ms. Garza, and we'll talk about enrollment, both on the credit and the continuing that workforce side. We'll give you some HR updates, and then I'll give you a leadership update as well. And I'd actually ask both John Clayton from Institutional Effectiveness Research and Planning, and Elisa Waldman to come up and provide the reports on enrollment. So we'll start with credit enrollment.
All right, thank you. I'm John Clayton, Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness here at the college. And this is actually going to be the final report on the fall 2022 active enrollment, as it continues to remain strong. Overall, the college enrollment is up .3%, as you can see on the chart, and head, and headcount, and is up .6% in credit hours, so remaining fairly strong. I just want to highlight a few things. The winter enrollment has strengthened over the past month and is trending up almost 22%. That's a total of 155 students. Winter has helped us serve an additional 388 students that was not current, was not enrolled at the college as of census in the fall. So that's a, an additional 388 students that we've served. College Now enrollment was actually the largest driver in the increase in enrollment. It's up 10%, which is 426 students. And the college also saw a significant increase in the midsemester classes. So those are classes that are starting in October or later, and that was up 9.4%, or 217 students. One other thing I wanted to mention here on the fall enrollment is that the college continues to monitor its ethnicity and racial breakouts. It experienced a decrease in the black students, negative 5.3%. However, there was a significant increase in the Hispanic students, 13.1%, continual growth there. That's an increase of 253 students over last fall. And one of the last final comment here is one of the greatest accomplishments this term was a concerted effort to reduce the number of drops and withdrawals. The college saw a decrease of 6% in that, or that's an additional 636 credit hours that we saved this last year. So, so that's, that's looking at the fall. You want to take questions here, Dr. Bowne? You want to slide to the next slide?
Where were we on drops? Sorry?
We had 6% fewer drops in credit hours this, this semester compared to last semester, which is significant.
Good, right?
Yes, that's, that's excellent.
That's very good.
Yep.
Retaining our current customers.
Yes.
I just wanted to see if I could, like on my TV remote, just rewind and then push slow down and get all those numbers again, but I'll do that at home some other point. That was...
They're, they're all pulled out of, out of the report that will get sent out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
So at the last trustees meeting, the guys requested a five-year trend for enrollment. And so there are two primary ways the college looks at enrollment trends. One of them is actually fall headcount, which you see on the screen right now, and the other is the annual unduplicated headcount, which we will get to here in a bit. At the, and the fall headcount and the five-year trend, while the college captures headcount periodically throughout the term, this is the most traditional reported metric that we use, and it's reported as of census, which is the 20th day of the term. And this actually helps us provide comparisons from us to other colleges around the nation. From the chart, you can see that JCC has experienced a decline of 10.2% over the past five years. However, let me put that a little bit in perspective for you. The college has actually performed better than the national trend for community colleges, which was actually declined at 24.4%. So we declined at 10.2, the national trend was 24.4, or nationally, we lost over 1.5 million students. Okay? Any questions on this before I move on?
Thank you for repeating, I appreciate that.
Trustee Muzel.
Do we have a comparison to our peers, the League of Innovation, our peer institutions?
I can get that, I don't have it at my fingertips, but that is something that we track and get.
Interesting to know if that's, how that relates to the 24.4% nationally.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, how many are we at with high school students right now? What percentage of these, of our 16 and a half thousand is high school?
About 24, 25%. About a fourth were students.
About 24.5. Do you know what it was in 1819 at all?
About 21, 22. It's grown just a little bit over the past five years.
Thank you.
I have another question on the College Now. I know we've, we, we created a budget item to give grants or scholarships for those that couldn't afford to take the courses in their high school, and we've spent a lot of that in the fall semester because they're continuing classes. How many total additional students do you think we've been able to serve with that?
Margie or Pam, do you have the numbers on that? Because I don't, we, it's, it's, the College Now actually goes over two semesters, and so it's a, it's a little early yet for us to really pull that and, and look at all those numbers, but we, we can start looking at that.
I assume during the budget workup for next year, we're going to look carefully at that and see how much progress we've made and what the impact was, because I think we all agreed it was a very good expenditure for the, for the county, for our community, and for those kids. So I'd like just to make sure we, we spend it all and we know that those, those students succeeded.
Yeah, absolutely. There was really two factors, I think, that drove the College Now enrollment up this last semester. One of them, I think, was the scholarship that you were mentioning. The other piece is the change to multi-majors. We've, we've seen an additional, if I, if I remember the number correctly, additional 500-plus students, just in the Quickstep Plus program alone. And we believe that is likely due to the change in the multi-majors, different ways for students to get in. Of course, we're going to be tracking to see if those students are successful or not. But, but yeah, so there's an increase there.
If I could say, Dr. McClellan, will you just quick snapshot? When we say multiple measures, what do we mean by that?
I asked, I, I forget.
Yeah, the multiple measures approach is our new way, instead of simply doing one high-stakes test, which has historically been how Johnson one high-stakes test, which has historically been how Johnson County has allowed a student into a college-level course, we are now looking at a range of sources that include overall GPA, subject area GPA over the previous two classes for a student. In some cases, like English, we allow for students to do a writing sample that is judged by the faculty and the discipline to look at whether or not they have the requisite skills, even if they did not have a requisite score. So, there are multiple entrance doors at this point.
Thank you. So, this is consistent with what Stanford and the Ivy League are doing, moving away from standardized testing and looking at...
Yes, and I would say we actually are ahead of the curve. It's nice to know Stanford occasionally follows us at Johnson County. And this is one of those times when we were actually forward-thinking and ahead. And to add a little bit to the question that trustee Musil asked, you're really looking more late February, early March to be able to make that, to John's point, what he was getting at. The total number for College Now actually includes a number of classes that are semester classes on this campus, but are year-long classes because of the way in which they're scheduled at the high school. So, to get that full number, it's really year over year as opposed to semester by semester. So, we need to wait until College Now enrollment for the spring is completed before we can actually make that a true comparison apples to apples. So, we're really looking late February when that enrollment date is due, because they do have extra time to enroll beyond the way in which we enroll on campus. There's a little extra time because of the processing of extra paperwork, and sometimes they need help from their counselors at the high school to actually get themselves enrolled, which cannot happen until they're back full-time in the classroom.
Thank you for that. And trustee Ingram has a...
And trustee Musil, what you're speaking about is the $200,000. Is that correct?
I couldn't remember the number, so I didn't say it, but yeah, $200,000 sounds right.
That's what I said. And I think the other thing that has really, you know, stayed with me is the fact that if we can get them here, and they see that they're successful, then we can speak to the retention that Dr. Bann has been talking about and the importance of that. So, I think it's fabulous, as I'm sure everybody up here does too. So, thank you.
Any other? Margie?
We have spent the $200,000. We saved approximately $40,000 for College Now spring classes. The money has given it some scholarships for College Now students.
Trustee Smith. Trustee Smith Everett, sorry.
One of the comments that Dr. McLeod made at the last board meeting that has haunted me this last month is, when we were talking about enrollment last month, you said, at some point, if we want to have a discussion on expansion and really looking at programs where we need extra courses, professors, so forth and so on, then we can talk about increasing enrollment strategically. I have thought about that multiple times over the month, and College Now is one of those areas where I'd like us to be able to take a deep dive. I'd like it to come through committee structure where we have enough time to really understand, you know, those of us in this role understand, I feel, of course you all do, but I think the understanding of how the funding works. We had an email exchange this fall, which illuminated some things that I did not understand about the funding structure of College Now, and I think it's important for us to understand that and be able to strategically think out if this is something that more scholarships or opportunities to get those students here is worth it, because our return on investment is, then they'll return and they'll be able to re-enroll, or if it's actually, they go other places anyway. And I think we need to know that and have data to back that up, as well as some of our health programs that we've talked about are at capacity, and we have waiting lists that we can talk about. So, I just wanted to echo that again, because I've thought about it so much since, and that's part of strategic enrollment. And I also concur that these numbers are fantastic, and I'm really grateful for having the five-year look. I've personally requested multiple times, and I appreciate it. So, thank you. That's my comments.
Any other questions or comments before John proceeds?
I think the other thing I would say is, just to reiterate, you know, the work that has been done behind the scenes that we're not aware of that has contributed to this too is really important. I mean, that's where you get into the weeds, and we don't know what those weeds are. But, thank you. It is paying off. So, please thank whomever from your respective areas. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to spring semester now?
Or the annual unduplicated.
Do you want to do annual? I don't have it in the PowerPoint.
Oh, okay, you don't have, okay. So, the other metric that we do look at, it's an annual unduplicated headcount, which is looking at those numbers over fall, spring, and summer together. And so, if a student is enrolled in more than one semester at any given academic year, they only get counted one time. And so, given that, we're down 15.1% over the past five years, but nationally, they're down 21.6%, or nearly 2 million students less. Okay? So, again, we're outperforming our national colleagues. Dr. Bann, if you want to go ahead and go to the spring. So, as you know, we internally track our enrollment trends for every term, and our spring enrollment is starting off strong and continues to strengthen as we get closer to the holiday break. As of Tuesday, the college was up 1% in headcount, or 95 students, and 1.6% in credit hours, or 1,346 credit hours above last spring at the same point in time. So, although it's still low with a slightly higher unemployment rate, we're beginning to see an upward trend in our non-traditional age students, which is those students that are 22 to 59 years of age, and that's 2.4% down instead of what we've been, 7, 8% down the last couple of semesters. So, that's beginning to improve a little bit. We're also seeing a growth in our first-time students for spring. We're up 5.9% for spring, and we continue to remain strong with our high school students, a 13.8% up. So, we're about one month out at this point in time from the start of the spring term, and we continue to expect an uptick in our enrollment activity when we return when the college reopens back in January. So, that's kind of a normal trend. So, with that, any questions on the spring enrollment?
No. And Elisa?
Thank you.
Good evening. Elisa Waldman, Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Education. So, I just want to present quickly continuing ed enrollment data for you for fall of 2022, right, which is just wrapping up, as John explained. So, right now, we have 4,550 enrollments. That is 126% ahead of fall 2020 at this same time, and it is 104% ahead of last year. So, we are in good stead. Our national benchmarking shows that most continuing ed departments are at about 75% of where they were last year. So, we feel good about that. We are falling a little bit short of our goal. We set it quite high based on the CARES Act funding. So, as we move into spring, the spring report, I just want to remind you all that CARES Act funding was funding that we had both available through Johnson County and also through our higher education emergency relief funds, our HER funds through the college. And that paid for about $3.5 million of tuition and over 5,000 of our enrollments. So, the fall numbers are very impressive because they held strong, even though we did not have funding this fall for those courses. So, now, I don't know if there are any questions on that, or if we can go ahead to spring and then ask all the questions. So, spring is going to start telling the picture of that CARES Act funding no longer being part of the equation. Right now, we're at 498 enrollments. That's as of this week for the upcoming spring. I should remind you, in case this seems confusing, in continuing ed, there is not one enrollment period like there is at the beginning of the semester on the credit side. People register throughout the entire semester. We will have people registering this evening for a class next week, even though we're only here until Thursday. So, it is usually about a two-week outlook that we can really get good data on if we're trying to project forward. So, for spring, we're at 498 enrollments. At this time in 2021, we're at 95% of where we were in 2021. Right at that point, we had 524 enrollments. If we look at spring of '22, we're at 59%. So, we're sort of heading towards that precipice of not having the CARES Act funding in place anymore to subsidize, just to give you a little foreshadowing. Now, what's interesting about this is that when we go back and look at the amount, the percent of enrollment that the CARES Act covered in the spring of '22, it was 40%. And we are at 59% of last year. So, we're really holding our water on this, but it looks a little bit imbalanced. As you will see in the consent agenda, I believe, we have a grant pending with Johnson County that we're hoping will be considered in January, and that would bring us a little more than $1 million of funding, quite similar to the CARES Act, through the American Rescue Plan, which we would apply in much the same way. And we have a couple of other partnerships that we are looking into to try to add to those funds, in addition to obviously continuing to create new programs that are keeping pace with what industry is needing. That's where we're at. Any questions?
No, any questions? Trustee Ingram.
How, you are probably unable to speak to Panasonic and all of this, but that will change some of this, is what you're anticipating, correct?
Well, we are hoping so. At this point, we're working very closely with the other community colleges in the area, and we have started having some very good dialogue with Panasonic and some of their representatives regarding what their workforce training needs will be. We do not have a full enough picture yet as to specifically what will be needed, but certainly they are aware that JCC and our other educational partners are most interested in providing that training. It will, they're looking, they've announced that they'll probably start hiring management level and above in about six months. So, probably looking at actually opening in 2025. So, we will, it is a process, but we are really involved in it and having wonderful talks. And I will add that whatever will come of that, hopefully it will be wonderful training opportunities. The collaboration opportunity we've had with the other educational institutions through this process of working with Panasonic, I think, will benefit all of us in many other arenas as well. It's been very, very beneficial to all talk and understand what we offer and how we can support each other.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trust, Dr. Bann?
All right. So, moving along, I'm going to invite Colleen Chandler to come and provide an HR update.
Good evening. The first topic that I'm going to provide a brief update on is the verb sunset. As you know, the deadline for faculty to submit their notification was December 1st, and the deadline for staff is December 31st. So, we still have a window of time for staff to provide notice. But as of December 5th, we've had 63 employees elect to retire and take advantage of verb with a retirement date effective July 1st of 2022 through the sunset of verb this next year. So, to clarify by breakdown, the 63 employees include 15 solid staff, 19 hourly staff, and 29 faculty. I do want to point out that about 18 of these individuals have already left the college. So, this includes individuals who submitted notice prior, earlier in the year, even prior to the termination to sunset verb. If they had a retirement date on or after July 1st of 2022, they're included in the 63 number. For those individuals that have already taken advantage, those 18 individuals, the payout for their verb benefit was $450,000 approximately. And then, those individuals who have not yet retired, we estimate that their payout will be approximately $1.5 or $1.6 million. So, that's, again, estimated based on what their sick leave balances are now. Again, it may depend on what their, it will depend on what their salary is and their sick leave balances are at the time of their retirement. Any questions? Yes?
Chair, do you mind if I ask?
Go ahead.
Can you remind us how many we anticipated at its largest potential of retirements? What the number would have been, or what we thought the maximum that could, would be eligible?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact down to the number, but there were approximately 200 and some individuals who were eligible. We did not anticipate that all of those individuals would take advantage of it. I think it was approximately, Dr. Bann, I invite you to correct me if I'm not remembering correctly, about 125 to 130 that we thought would likely take advantage of it. But again, that was an estimate just based on sick leave balances and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Yes. The second topic is an update on the internal equity adjustments that we've discussed at previous board meetings. We, HR, are in the process of developing a form and training for, moving forward with this update or this process. Once the training and the form are developed, we will begin communicating that information to campus in January, and that will include training to supervisors on how to work with their employees to document, to review and document that relevant years of experience as it relates to the position. And then, that information will be due to Human Resources at the end of February. Once we receive those forms, Human Resources will begin our review and analysis of that information to determine what appropriate pay adjustments would be applicable for those individuals based on their documented relevant years of experience. And again, as a reminder, this is based on our current framework. This is not based on the framework that will be coming as a result of the RFP process. And as we covered in a previous board meeting, based on the years of experience, the system currently reflects, so again, this is absent the exercise that we're going to do at the beginning of the spring semester, assuming that the years of experience is captured in banner right now is accurate, we're looking for about a $2.1 million annualized salary increase for those individuals. And we're talking about full-time, non-bargaining unit staff.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear. That $2.1 million is based solely on an analysis of the years of experience relevant to their current position?
That is based on what this, we believe, based on the data that we currently have available to us, their years of experience to be included.
But the analysis is simply, how long have you worked at something that is consistent, relevant to your current job description?
That's correct.
And then, we're going to have a vendor that you're talking about on the next slide that will come in and help us figure out all the job descriptions.
That is a part of that RFP process, that's correct.
And then, that RFP process will also include going out to the market to determine the market wage rates for those specific job descriptions.
That's correct.
Okay. So, there are two more steps, which are likely to increase that number beyond what simply the internal equity number is there.
That's correct.
I was saying, it's very important as we go through this process, everybody understands we're talking about millions of dollars unrelated to any annual increases.
That's correct.
So, you know, buckle up for that. And that's why I think it's very important that we do this very carefully and scrutinize each step as a board and an administration, because we know those numbers are going to be bigger, and we want to be fair, but we also have to be fair to the other stakeholders that we have in the county.
At some point, we've talked about 18 months.
Yes.
Remind me where that 18 months fits in. Is it in the equity, internal equity?
Not the internal equity. That's for the work of the vendor related to the RFP. That's second part of the project.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And so, the third update, to your point, Trusty Ingram, we have, the RFP process has played out in terms of we've received a number of submittals to that RFP, and that is closed. An evaluation committee has reviewed those proposals and selected a vendor for recommendation. That recommendation will be going to Management and Finance Committee in January, and then to the full board for approval at the January, at the January board meeting. And then assuming the board approves that at the January meeting, then we can sign, get the contract signed. HR will begin working with the vendor to develop a timeline for the project, again anticipating that 18-month window of time for, to complete the job architecture development, the job descriptions, and taking those job descriptions to market.
Just if I'm doing math right, and just remember, I'm an elementary person. So, you know, there's always potential there, my math is not right.
Grace.
But, Grace, thank you. But it seems highly probable that we may not even affect this budget cycle more than what we've cited, because the 18 months that we're projecting for working with this vendor would then, at the end of that 18 months, begin the process of adjusting salaries for staff. That wouldn't, the 18 months is the process of redoing our internal criteria and placement and all that, not beginning the actual work of moving people salary and making adjustments. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's hard to speak to a timeline right now since we haven't identified the vendor and fleshed that out. I would anticipate we'd have a much clearer answer once we have a contract and start developing that project, that project timeline. But yes, at this point, we're not suggesting or certain that we would be ready to implement prior to June, or July 1 of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm clear. We've got really two steps here. One is the internal equity piece that's estimated at $2.1 million. That's going to be, you're going to have information on that in January and February and work on it, right? So, that by July 1 of 2023, our next budget year, won't we be looking at appropriating the amount of funds to take care of internal equity? Not, not the job families in the market survey, but at least the internal equity?
Yes, it's our goal to have the internal equity piece resolved in the spring.
So, I want to make sure, Trusty Smith Everett was asking that. The next part is probably in fiscal year 20... Gosh, this is getting weird. Fiscal year 25.
Yes.
But next July, when we're working, we're on fiscal year 24, we're going to look at the internal equity piece as an expense item in the operating budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Trusty Ingram.
So, when Trusty Musel is talking about two steps, internal equity and career laddering, then we also have the third step of job families?
The job families is part of the architecture. That's all part of the scope of the engagement with the vendor. So, they'll create the architecture, the framework, the job families, the job descriptions, and then take those job descriptions to market. All of that is part of that project.
And that, that's what confused me too, because career laddering is a part of the job families and figuring out how people can move up in the chain. But really what we're doing is an architecture of our overall job descriptions. And some of those may not be part of the specific laddering program, but they're all going to be reviewed for job descriptions and then taken to market.
Correct.
So, that's, I was confused a little bit by the slide that says career laddering, because that's really a subsection of the overall RFP as I see it. I don't know what we call it, but...
It is. The use of the term career laddering does cause some confusion here. Career laddering piece, if you can kind of try to separate those out a little bit, is the idea of helping employees develop to go through that process, right? So, but in order for there to be a framework for them to move through, we have to develop that. And that's where the architecture and the job families come into play and the development of the job descriptions. And then the career laddering piece is a byproduct of that work, if you will.
Was that described at all in Moneyball?
They hired a vendor, there are a number of vendors that they would hire.
I'm sorry.
And then they would steal it, like after two years of contract. So, yes.
And you're comfortable with this timeframe, that what you're proposing is, you feel like we can meet all of that and...
Yes, I do believe so. Again, I don't feel comfortable committing to a firm deadline as it relates to the second piece of the process until we have a vendor online and we've really worked through the timeline with them. I do think based on the feedback we received through the RFP process, I do think that that broader timeframe that we've been talking about all along is still feasible. But I don't feel comfortable committing to, we would be ready to implement on this date until we do some more work with, after with the vendors on board.
I'm glad Mr. Hamel will be chairing the HR committee, of which I will be a part of.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate you, Bob. Kansas Budget Hawk.
That's a lot.
Want to reconsider?
Let me ask you this, Colleen, and thank you for all these questions. I'm not clear, it's probably my ignorance. Where does the, aren't we doing a compensation study? Where does that fit into this?
So, that's part of the RFP process, or the work that, of the vendor that we're reflecting through the RFP process. So, again...
It's part and parcel, right?
Right.
So that we know, not just, we're not arbitrarily raising $2.1 million, right? It's going to be based upon the study.
Right. But the $2.1 million is about the internal equity piece. That's the first part that we're doing in the spring. And then we're engaging the vendor in helping us develop the job architecture, the job family architecture. Once that's done, going along with that work is developing job descriptions for each of those job families and the levels within the job families, taking those to market, and then plugging employees into that framework. All of that is within the scope of the work of the vendor.
Okay.
Well, really, three steps.
How are we doing?
And then there's the job family, job description step, and then there's the take that to market step.
Yes.
And then we have to fund it at wherever it comes.
The numbers we don't know are the parts about step two and three. We know...
Don't know completely step one yet.
We don't, but the ballpark of $2.1 is...
The ballpark.
A number. It's at least a number.
Subject to change. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Colleen, thank you very much.
All right. In keeping with the report, just wanted to provide an update on kind of the leadership transitions that have been taking place and that are front of mind for all of us. The movement towards a provost model, we will, as we've talked about, begin the search for the VP for Student Success in January. We will provide you, related to academic affairs and the role of Chief Academic Officer, an update for you in January. And then together, Dr. McLeod, Dr. Corb, and Pam Bass are going to go on a listening tour for our both academic affairs branch as well as the student success branch to listen to what are folks thinking about with a very deliberate process of how they go about listening to and understanding the questions that are raised from each of the branches, to understand and to communicate where are we going? What does that look like? And how do we make sure that we understand what the concerns are, for example, that faculty and staff may have, so that we can account for those as we build the provost model for full implementation? So, Brett Cooper asked earlier some of the questions that faculty are asking. This is ahead of that, anticipating that those are the questions that are coming to be able to answer, to listen to those and understand those questions so that we make sure that we take that information as input into developing a structure and approach to best meet the needs, frankly, our students, but do it, to do it together with our two branches. So, that is a process that will take place in the spring semester. Next is Executive Director of Inclusion and Belonging. We will post that position, as previously discussed, in January. And so, that work will move forward at your stations tonight. You have the job description and summary of the work of the inclusion and belonging function. And then also coming to you, coming to you and to the campus in January will be an update on how we move forward for the EVP and Chief Operating Officer position as well as the Vice President for Human Resources. And then I'd like to close this leadership transition slide with just making sure this group understands, the announcement happened today on campus, that Dr. Leslie Quinn was selected to serve as Dean for Enrollment Services. That position is only available because Margie Shelley is retiring after 32 years with the college. And in addition to congratulations to Dr. Quinn, we also say congratulations and thank you to Margie Shelley for your great work. So, thank you. And then I'd like to wrap up my report with just a few acknowledgements and thank you for a great, great semester. And that is, first of all, and we didn't say this at the beginning of the semester, we didn't say it in the middle point of the semester with any great confidence, but we can say with confidence that enrollment is up in the fall semester. And I attribute that to the great work of our faculty and staff across campus and our partners in College Now and Quick Step Plus Delivery. But we've not been able to say up for a long time. And so, very appreciative of the team, and the initial numbers for spring semester, as John shared, are positive. We've also made good progress this semester on strategic initiatives, everything from, from our guided pathways work to the academic planning tool, to the work around inclusion and belonging, to the work around community partnerships and employee engagement and selecting of a tool for implementation for measuring employee engagement in the semester ahead. Also for the team that worked on the League for Innovation in the Community College Reaffirmation Process, and our students have had a great semester. We see it in terms of the learning environment, those that are formal, either in the classroom or online or some form of online, as well as for the learning environments that take place in our student clubs and organizations. Our student clubs and organizations, especially those that compete, like our debate team and our model United Nations team, have had a good, a good fall semester, as well as our athletic teams. Had a great fall, frankly. Most recently with our women's volleyball team, I believe, placing fourth in the nation. So, I know they weren't as excited about fourth place as they were going into the tournament, but when they look back on the season, they are mighty proud, as are we. And so, I want to say to all of you in the room and to our faculty and staff across campus, I wish you and this board a wonderful holiday season. I wish you a wonderful time, a healthy time, and a safe time as we then return for a great spring semester in January. And so, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Bown?
I don't have any questions. I think it's important, and Brett, you brought it up, and I, I think it's important, I said this two years ago, next month, on the inclusion and belonging position and the process. This will happen too fast for a bunch of people and too slow for a bunch of people. You asking yours, when are we going to fill that position? We've been working toward that in a transparent fashion for months. In fact, at our Committee of the Whole this month, we had an update on our strategic initiative and where we are on that from the people that are on the ground doing it. And they reported there was a job description being developed. So, I don't want anybody to leave the impression that somehow we have forgotten this, because it has been a very deliberate process. And it won't be fast enough for some people, it'll be too fast for others. But if, I'd encourage everybody to read the organization description and to read the goal of student success for all students and to read the definition of diversity to ensure that it includes everything about a diverse group of people around the table. So, I just, I appreciate your update on that, because it follows directly from our Committee of the Whole. And there shouldn't be any suggestion, I don't think, that we have moved too slowly or too quickly. I think we've done it in the right deliberate fashion to get the right result. And I look forward to the position being filled. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty. Any other comments, questions for... Trusty, continue.
I do want to say thank you, Dr. Bown, for a really great year, especially in the data that Mr. Clayton reviewed. If you look at where we were in 2020 and how far down we were in the 13,000s, now we're in the 16,000s and headed in the right direction. We really made, I think, a really great and quite fast recovery to get our student population, or headcount trending in the right direction. So, thank you for your leadership.
If I could add, there's a little bit of an asterisk on the fall of 2020 in that the, the enrollment of our College Now students and Quick Step Plus students was significantly delayed beyond the census date. So, certainly the team has done a fantastic job, and I don't want to take away from that. But I also, there's an asterisk on the fall of 2020.
Okay.
So, again, not to, not to, I'm not trying to refute your comments, but to just say, we shouldn't take more credit than where credit is due. So, but the team has done a great job. We've had a great year.
Thank you.
I suggest that the presidency of the college or higher education institution should take credit whenever it's offered, given that grace is not something often offered to the administration.
It's like Bill Clinton taking credit for crime rates in the 90s. He's doing it.
Okay. We had a, you know how much better we've done since 2020?
I tell you what.
Trusty Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, if I can, just push back a little bit. Trusty Musel, I don't take Mr. Cooper's comments as suggesting any, I don't know, malfeasance, any sneaky thing we're doing. I think he's representing a constituency that has questions. And he just has, his job is to echo those to a body that is in charge of paying attention. And I would, I wanted to keep my comments brief tonight, and I've tried to, because we have quite a bit to cover tonight. But I would have commented then, so I'll comment now. You know, we all have the same questions. We're all asking them, whether they're on the dais or not. There's a lot of change, we're aware of it, and we are all, we're all paying attention. So, that's all I can offer at this point, but I just wanted to offer a different perspective. I don't think Mr. Cooper is implying there's any, anybody purposefully trying to drag their feet. It's just the question that is still yet to be answered out there, so.
Any other questions, comments? I will say, I had the thought, and I love arguing with Greg, Trusty Musel, Trusty Smith Everett, but I think that, the question was appropriate, the response was appropriate. I think that certainly there's been controversy or tension on both sides, so I appreciate your comments. I will say, if I may, I thank you to Dr. Bown and for his leadership this year in what, we've had some bumpy moments, I think, in the national and local political landscape, and I think even here locally. And I think I've consistently asked Dr. Bown that he'd be honest and forthright with me. My leadership style is different in that I typically drag Nancy Ingram along with me. She helps me see, think, and grill him. And I know at times he's probably felt ganged up on with two of us being there for what typically results in my one-on-one. I don't know if you have an additional one-on-one with him. But Dr. Bown has spent a considerable amount of time with each of us this year. He has six bosses right now, seven soon to be restored. And so, it's difficult to deal with all of us, take our thoughts and insights. All of us love this college, I will say, and yet we're sort of amateur community college professionals, including myself, so... professionals, including myself, so, and I'm sure it's interesting to take all of our input, weigh that, measure it, and then do innovative things like the CDL, like Panasonic. It's been quite a remarkable year, and I appreciate his leadership style, the honesty. I'm 43 years old, the man asks my opinion, and I've been flattered, and I've typically gone to Trustee Musel and Ingram for thought and input. So I do appreciate Dr. Bound's leadership, asking for help or asking for thought and input, and I appreciate that, and I think the outside-the-box thought on retaining students and, I think I can say this, getting on a private plane to go to Reno to see what Panasonic's system looks like there. I mean, the relationships with KU, you've done a good job maintaining relationships with stakeholders, and all of it for the success of our students. So I just wanted to congratulate you and say thank you. And same thing to everyone here at this, this table. It's a product, I think, of several administrations sitting at this table and the leadership that came before us, and we're here because of them. So thank you, Dr. Bound, thank you to everyone. And unless there's any other questions or comments on this point, I'll move on. That concludes the president's, that's it.
That's it.
For recommendations, for actions. I think I'm to ask, is there any new business here for the good of the order? Any new business before we get to old business? In old business, we'll be reviewing and vetting applicants for the Board of Trustee vacancy that we have because of Dr. Joey Coesten's resignation. So we have this agenda item to select candidates to interview for the board position vacated. Who wrote this? Was this Caitlin? Thank you to whoever wrote this. The position vacated by Joey Coesten upon her resignation prior to our November board meeting. A successor trustee will be selected at a special meeting of the board on January 9, 2023. We have received 18 applications from different individuals, and I'll apologize in advance that we had two at opening a business last Monday, and I know I talked to several people and they've applied, so I thank everyone who has applied. We're grateful for that interest that these applicants have expressed, and we certainly have a qualified pool, one that is impressive, influential, and frankly exemplary of our community. And Trustee Musel had asked to make a comment here, and I think I'll let him.
Well, I'm, you're probably all tired of hearing from me. I didn't think 11 years ago that I would ever be the senior trustee in terms of service, but I've been through, this will be the fourth time I've been through this, and I warned all of you last month that this will not be easy. I had no idea that it would be as hard as trying to select out of 18 people, because we've never had that much interest in the previous three times that I've done this. And I warned you that you would probably have multiple people that you know, and some, multiple people maybe that are friends or you have relationships with, and you have to pick one and reject now 17. And for the applicants who may be watching, I tell you, when you first start going through this, the first time you go through it, you're hoping that there are six or seven or eight that you can just put aside immediately and not have to focus on them. And I can say for myself, there weren't any like that. So these are, these are serious people, seriously interested in the college, with a wide diversity of age and experience, people who have retired from very important positions and people who are starting out, and people who are in the middle of their careers. So I just, I just offered to leave that, that perspective is, when you, when you talk about grace, and it came up earlier, this is a time when we're going to have to figure out among ourselves, you know, how many people we want to interview, because on January 9, I think at the special meeting, we're going to interview people, and we can interview all 18 of them if we want to. I don't think we want to interview all 18, but I found it difficult myself to try to figure out how to differentiate people on, on paper. So as we go through this, I think it's going to be a difficult task to get down to a number that is manageable and still represents a broad pool. And I thought I would offer that, because this is, this will be the hardest one of four that I've done, and I can tell you, all three of them were difficult, but this one with 18 people, with some very, very highly qualified people is going to be difficult.
You helped select trustee...
I think Lindstrom, Sandate, and Drummond.
Yeah. I blanked on David, sorry. David Lindstrom. And thank you for that, Greg. So through the application process, each candidate responded to a series of questions and provided a resume. Each trustee has reviewed the applications. This evening, we will narrow the pool, and Dr. Bound and I and Trustee Ingram and I discussed this, frankly, we're going to recommend that we select a pool of no more than five candidates for interview as a matter of workload and frankly fairness, so that we don't spend too much of the college's time. And we tie up, whenever we gather, we tie up a ton of staff time and resources, so that's part of the consideration. So based upon the motion and vote of each separate candidate, we, we'll be asking to narrow the pool of no more than five candidates for interview based upon a motion and vote of each separate candidate. Each candidate receiving the votes of a majority of the board, I'm going to ask, and I propose to Trustee Ingram and Musel and Dr. Bound, that I'm going to nominate at the recommendation of Kelsey Nizar, I'm going to nominate each individual, and if the motion doesn't receive a second, the applicant will not be considered for an interview, but if the motion is seconded, I'm, and this is a great pool, as Trustee Musel suggested, I would recommend that we simply vote, and if we wind up with more than five, we just continue the process until we have five. Is everyone, I don't know if I explained that right, but does that make sense?
We can, we might start with a broader pool, and then we'll just keep narrowing until we've got five that have received a majority.
Yeah, there's a number of people that I want to vote for, frankly, because I don't want to see them at a breakfast, lunch, or cocktail party and not say I didn't vote for them. So I'd like multiple ballots as a politician to...
I agree, I agree. This is incredibly tough, and I just want to speak to...
We have stakeholders and colleagues at different institutions and nonprofits here, and they just deserve a thorough consideration. So that's, that's my goal. I don't mean to make it political, but it is out of respect and consideration to the quality of the applicant pool that I want to do that. Could we agree on that as a ground rule, that we'll simply vote until we narrow to five? And it would be, and having talked to Caitlin and Dr. Bound, that we would simply call and vote, and I'm anticipating frankly, we'll have at least seven to 10 on the first round, and then vote again to narrow it to five, if that makes sense.
Could I make a suggestion?
Of course.
If, for some strange reason, you don't have five in the first round, do you stop there? Is it up to five, or is it five? I just want to...
Well, I think, did Kelsey write this? Who wrote this?
This, this, what you're reading from is basically what they did last time.
Right.
And probably the time before that, knowing that we had 18 candidates, we worked with the president's office and presumably you and, and...
This largely reflects what I asked.
Up to five language.
Yep, yep.
So if the motion carries with the applicant receiving a majority of the votes, in which case this would be four, we wrote here at my direction that the applicant would be interviewed by the board, but I, I didn't ask for a caveat that here, that we, we vote for up to five to advance to interview, and we'll simply repeat the process till we get, I don't think we'll have any trouble with five.
Down to five, not up to?
Vote down to five, yes. So I'm anticipating almost a semifinal here. So we have these, these 18, we vote, and I'm anticipating 10 or more, frankly. There's a number of friends, colleagues, and people I respect here that, that I want to fully consider, and then if we have more than five, we just vote on, we vote again till we have five.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Bound thinks we'll pick two shining stars, and there's just not two people here.
I agree with that process. My suggestion, having gone through this same thing on the Judicial Nominating Commission, is that the first time each trustee, the first vote, the first time through, you can't vote for more than 10 people. And then when we narrow it down to whoever we have, then the next time, you can't vote for more than five. Because otherwise, you might, if you have unlimited votes, you may never get down to five. So you've got to at some point decide how you eliminate people, and we each have to do that in our own head, I think.
Would you...
Then vote.
May I request you to make that motion? I think it's a good process. Let's vote for no more than 10 and then vote for no more than five.
I will say, if we vote for no more than five, what if we don't get to five? Do we want to make sure we get to five, or are we okay if we get three or four? I don't know, I'm just...
I'll bet you money, well, I can't do that.
I would, I would ask, I think we ought to, maybe I'll make the motion, let's discuss the, I would move that in the first ballot, each trustee may vote for up to 10 candidates to move to the semifinal round, and in the semifinal round, each trustee shall vote for five candidates from that pool, so that you have to pick your top five out of whatever is left, and that way we should have five, we should get to five top vote-getters.
Second.
A little complicated.
Unless, I guess you're, if you don't have five you would vote for...
That would be the only change. You said shall vote for five.
Five or fewer?
Five, I...
If you don't, if you don't feel like you...
I guess I would, I would change the motion to say, and vote for up to five, no more than five on the semifinal round. If we, if we come, I don't think we're going to have that problem, but if we come down to where there's a majority of us that only want to interview three, then we clearly think those three are the top candidates. I'm, I'm of the mind that I'd rather make sure we interview five, because there are people on here that I don't know, and I, I'm going to vote for a couple of them, because I'd like to hear from them in person, so that was my thinking.
I'll second, I'll second that motion. Up, up to five.
Up to 10 and then up to five.
Okay, the motion has been moved by Trustee Musel and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Let me restate it, I think, for clarity purposes. The motion is then that in this first ballot, each trustee shall vote for up to 10 candidates, at which point we would consider the result, and in the next round of balloting, that each trustee shall vote for up to five candidates to consider for interview. Is that a decent crafting? Is that your understanding, Mr. Trustee?
Yes.
Okay.
And to clarify, are these public vocal votes, or are they ballot?
I thought they would be vocal.
They are public. Just making sure.
The motion has been moved and seconded by Trustee Musel and Trustee Smith Everett, although, any discussion, excuse me, any discussion?
My only thought is, there's just a lot of great candidates in here, and when we get down to interviewing five, I do understand the time constraints, but I just thought that our, the number of people we were going to interview would be a little bit larger. So if any change, I'd say a range of five to seven interviews versus just holding it five. But if we're, if we're going to stay with that, that's fine.
I will say, I think, I'm a don as well.
Well, may I ask, our special meeting, it is a special meeting.
It is a special meeting.
January 9, starting at...
4:00.
4:00. Did you remember from your review, did we have 20-minute interviews of each candidate?
Yep.
20 minutes.
20 minutes, so five people would take...
An hour.
Well, you're going to have time between them, so probably, probably half an hour each, that's two and a half hours. I don't have a problem with going up to five to seven, or to seven. I, you know, if the majority of the board would rather interview seven than five...
I like a range.
I think it would give us a broader pool, and I don't have a problem with that. I would accept seven as a friendly amendment.
Okay. I, yeah, I concur.
Yes, Mr. Trustee.
Sure. And everybody's got their own preference on what they're looking for exactly, but one of, some of the things that I am really concerned, I want to look for, and I'm sure everybody's got really great points, so, but I don't necessarily want to campaign for individuals as we're going through these either. But I would like to point out that I think it's important to find someone who's actually ran for office and is willing to put the work in. I think that's an important step, because I've, I know other board members that have been appointed in the community in the last years, show up, and have caused some issues just not making that commitment. I think by somebody who's actually done that kind of work, I think we're more likely to get it. And then also, we had two candidates in the, in the audience tonight, that I think that's something worth noting as well, I don't know if everybody noticed that or not, but...
Commissioner Ken Seltzer and Mr. Greg Mitchell were here tonight.
Yeah, I think that's an impressive commitment. I'm ready. Oh, Stephanie, thank you, sorry.
I apologize, Stephanie. I'm blind in this eye.
So I think those things are impressive, those shows that commitment's already happening, and I could say more, but you guys already have your ideas in place as well.
And we will not have Dick Carter's socks to keep us awake any longer.
Have a good evening.
Trying to escape quietly, and you're making...
I have no objection to that. I assume the, the motion has been amended now?
Correct.
Has it been, do you continue your second?
Yes.
So as I understand it now, we will vote to, for up to 10 on the first round, and then the second round, a trustee may vote for up to seven. We will now consider seven for interview on January 9. Any other discussion on this amendment, on this motion? Any other discussion? We're seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. The motion passes unanimously, and now I believe we'll move to the names of each...
We're going to have, we're going to be on our honor about voting for 10, because I don't think we can expect Caitlin to keep up.
We're going to, we'll check after. I'm going to move each name.
Yep.
And then Caitlin will call the roll as to each trustee. Am I missing any step here?
You move each name. If there's a second, then you, you vote.
Then you do, we'll vote.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So I'll read each name, if there's a second, then we'll vote, if not, we'll move on to the next name.
That's correct.
So if I may, and if everyone's ready, the first applicant here is Julie Brewer, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Musel. Any, we're not going to discuss, are we? I think we're just going to vote.
So yes or no?
Okay. So all those in favor, please signify.
No, I'll go roll call.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
So Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
I have that that carries five to one. The next name I have is Cheryl Carpenter-Davis, and I so move. Second. Hearing none, the next name I have is Mr. Thomas Herzog, and I so move. Motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Hamel, although...
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
Mark Hamel.
Yes.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
No.
Lee Cross.
No.
Nancy Ingram.
Yep.
And I have that vote two to four.
Two to four, that's correct.
The next name I have is Stephanie, and is it McCallus?
McCallus.
Excuse me. And I so move.
And I will second.
It has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Please call the roll.
Mark Hamel.
Yes.
Greg Musel.
No.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Ms. McCallus carries five to one. Next name I have is Dr. Jerry Mulnar.
Second.
And I so move. Motion has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Hamel. Please call the roll.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
No.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
Mark Hamel.
Yes.
And it passes four to two. The next name I have is Jim McNair. And I so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Musel. Please call the roll.
Don or Tan.
No.
Lee Cross.
No.
Nancy Ingram.
No.
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
It's a tough crowd. It fails one to five. The next name I have is Mr. Greg Mitchell, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Rattan. Please call the roll.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
Yes.
Greg Musel.
No.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
I have that that carries five to one.
I'm going to quit playing.
The next, the next name I have is Jay Moyer, and I so move.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Please call the roll.
Nancy Ingram.[1798.47]
No.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
No.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes. I have that that's three to three. Next name I have is Clay Norkey. And I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ratan. Please call the roll.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Pass.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
I have that that passes four to one.
Four to two.
Four to one.
I pass.
He abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't know you abstained.
The next name I have is Eric Person. And I so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Please call the roll.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
No.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Abstain.
Nancy Ingram.
No.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
I have that that is two, three, one. The next name I have is Erica Petersheet. And I so move. I so move. Hearing no second. The next name I have is Mr. Ed Peterson. And I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ratan. Please call the roll.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
I have that that passes five to one. The next name I have is former trustee Melody Rail. And I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Musel. Please call the roll.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
I have four to two. The next name I have is Roger Samuel. I so move. I so move. Hearing none. The next name I have is Keely Schneider, who I move. I move Keely Schneider. Hearing no second. The next name I have is Mr. Former Insurance Commissioner Ken Seltzer, who I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Hamel. Please call the roll.
Mark Hamel.
Yes.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
No.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
I have four to two. The next name I, the next name I have on this list is Mr. Zach Thomas, who I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ratan. Please call the roll.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
I have five to one. The final name I have is Mr. Jerry Williams, who I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ratan. And please call the roll.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
No.
I have four to two. And for any abstention, if I may explain, I, there's only so many votes and I do apologize. How many do we have here?
Ten. Highly ten.
What if we only have three or four? What if we only have three or four?
We don't have three or four.
Can you read out those that we do have? I was.
I have Julie Brewer. I have Stephanie Macalas. I have Jer, Dr. Jerry Mulnar. I have Mr. Greg Mitchell. I have Mr. Clay Norkey. Mr. Ed Peterson. Former trustee Melody Rail. Commissioner Ken Seltzer. Zach Thomas. And Jerry Williams. Did I get everybody?
Give us just a minute to create the score sheet.
Yes, thank you.
Wow. So, so if we're just cutting it down to seven, we're just getting rid of three.
Yeah.
Bastard man. I guess you've got to go through the voting each time, don't you?
I went pretty fast. I messed up who made it in. Oh, Julie, Julie. And then who's after?
Stephanie.
Okay, so the other two. The no Jim or insurgent?
No.
Great. No Moyer. Right. Mm-hmm. Ed Peterson. Thank you, that's where I messed up. Okay.
I have ten?
Yep.
We're going to just double-check our lists.
That's one, okay.
Hold it, hold it up to the line.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready?
Are we ready to proceed?
Read again, make sure we, everybody has the same ten. Then we're going to go through.
Caitlin, would you like to call? State the list.
Sure. We have Julie Brewer. Stephanie Macalas. Jerry Mulnar. Greg Mitchell. Clay Norkey. Ed Peterson. Melody Rail. Ken Seltzer. Zach Thomas. And Jerry Williams.
And this is the time we'll do five to seven. Correct?
Yes, we'll interview up to seven is my understanding.
And just so it's clear, that's up to seven yes votes, right? I mean, we're just, we have to narrow it down to, is that how it would work? I mean, you, you each get seven yes votes if you want to vote seven times. Yes. Trying to make sure we have it seven. It's, it's affirmative. It's seven, you have up to seven yes votes. Right.
So just to be clear, it's my understanding, we're then consequently going to interview seven.
Up to seven.
Up to seven, yes, yes, yes. Okay. Are we ready? Anybody not ready? All right, the first name we have is Julie Brewer. I, I so move Julie Brewer.
Or do we just go, are we just voting on these?
I don't know, I was just following.
The question was, do we need to, a motion to move forward? We just, we just vote? We just work the. The same process?
I, yeah. Yes, go to the same process.
That was my assumption.
Ask for a second.
Yeah, well, we will ask for a second, yep.
I move Julie Brewer.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Musel. Please call the roll.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Once again, I have five to one. The next name I have is Stephanie, and I apologize, Stephanie, is Stephanie Macalas?
Yes.
Yes, Stephanie Macalas. Proof we've never met. If we have, I apologize. Like I said, we really apologize. It's a very talented pool and thank you all for applying. Ms. Stephanie Macalas, I so move.
Second.
The motion's been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ratan. Please call the roll.
Nancy Ingram.
No.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
No.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes. I have three, three.
That's great.
The next name I have is Dr. Jerry Mulnar, who I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Hamel. Please call the roll.
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
Mark Hamel.
Yes.
Greg Musel.
No.
Don or Tan.
No.
Lee Cross.
No.
Nancy Ingram.
No.
I have one, five. The next name on our list is Mr. Greg Mitchell, who I so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Please call the roll.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
No.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
I have four, two. The next name I have on our list is Mr. Clay Norkey, who I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Musel. Please call the roll.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
I have five, one. The next name we have is Mr. Ed Peterson, who I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ratan. Please call the roll.
Don or Tan.
Yes.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
No.
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
And I have three, three. The next name I have on our list is former trustee Melody Rail, who I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Musel. Please call the roll.
Lee Cross.
Yes.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
Yes.
Mark Hamel.
No.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
No.
I have four, two. The next name I have on our list is Mr. Ken Seltzer, who I so move.
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Musel. Please call the roll.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett.
No.
Mark Hamel.
Yes.
Greg Musel.
Yes.
Don or Tan.
No.
Lee Cross.
No. The next name I, I have three, three. The next name I have is Zach Thomas, who I so move and seconded by trustee Smith Everett. Please call the roll.
Laura Smith Everett?
Yes.
Mark Hamel?
No.
Greg Muesl?
No.
Donna Ratan?
Yes.
Lee Cross?
Yes.
Nancy Ingram?
Yes.
I have four, two. The next name I have is Jerry Williams. Who I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ratan. Please call the roll.
Mark Hamel?
No.
Greg Muesl?
Yes.
Donna Ratan?
Yes.
Lee Cross?
I'm out of votes.
You can vote up to seven.
I've got seven.
Okay.
I'd vote all day.
Was that an abstention then?
Well, we've set the rules, so yes, I have to abstain.
Nancy Ingram?
Yes.
Laura Smith Everett?
Yes.
Four, one, one.
Four, one. One, two, three, four, five. Seven, yeah.
Six.
Yeah, so we got six people to interview.
Can you identify?
Julie Brewer. I have Greg Mitchell. Then I have Clay Norkey. Former trustee Melody Rail. Zach Thomas. And Mr. Jerry Williams. Did I miss anybody?
Nope.
Okay then, so then we have six candidates to interview. On January ninth. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair, since three of us have not been through this before, I wondered if Kelsey might go through the ballot process that we'll use on January ninth? To make, to, for us to vote. Frankly, I'm not sure I remember if we just vote for one each time and we just eliminate the lowest number here, or how we do it.
My memory, if I may, I think we, didn't we do ballot?
It's on here.
For Bob and then for Henry? Trustee Drummond and trustee Sandy?
I think it'd be helpful for the candidates that are gonna be interviewed in public to know, we have it on our, on our...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just...
Sure, I can go through the process, and this was the process that was followed in 2016 and likely in 2013.
Yes.
For interviews, candidates will interview in alphabetical order. Each candidate will have five minutes to address the board, followed by 15 minutes of questions and answers. Following all personal interviews, each trustee will indicate on a private written ballot to candidates for nomination for appointment as trustee. Note that the ballot is an open record, subject to disclosure, but each trustee may indicate their preference simultaneously in writing on their ballot. The ballots will be tabulated and read aloud. The nomination ballot is not the election ballot. Those candidates who receive two or more nomination votes will be announced by the chair as eligible for the final ballot. And then for the final ballot, the final ballot will then be distributed and each trustee will select one candidate. The votes will be tallied and read aloud, and the candidate receiving the majority number of votes will be announced. If there's a tie, all other candidates will be dropped from the final ballot. The board may openly discuss the two final candidates for up to five minutes, and then the final ballot voting will be repeated with only two candidates listed. The five-minute board discussion and voting on the final two candidates may be repeated multiple times if necessary. And then finally, following the final vote, the chair will call for a motion to appoint and elect one of the final two candidates to fill the unexpired term, the former trustee. Following the second, the chair may allow discussion and then calls the vote. Once a majority of the trustee, remaining trustees for one candidate is achieved, the voting stops and this candidate is deemed elected. If there's not a majority at this stage, the chair will call for a motion and the candidate who received the second most votes, and the process will continue to be repeated as necessary.
Thank you, Mrs. Zar.
May I clarify, the majority of the votes means...
Four.
Four. You have to get four votes to be elected, not if somebody abstains, you can't be elected three to two.
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Truly, the only reason I abstained here was, we had a limitation on...
No.
Any, any comments before we move on?
Just to clarify for...
Yes.
Those on the newbie side of doing this, this will be immediately following the interviews?
Yes.
Okay? And I'm sure our fabulous team will, but just a request that we'll get those finalists condensed down and re-sent out with their application, all that information to look over for the third or fourth time for some of us.
Just take it out of your notebook.
And I think...
I need to try trees, it's all right.
Now appropriate, we have a legislative summit in Washington DC, February 5th through the 8th. And we will ask each of our finalists, interviewees, if you would please to clear your calendar for that time, we'll invite the new trustee to attend with us to Washington DC for our legislative summit, as much as, how much is it? 10 to 25% of our budget comes from the federal government, I would estimate. So it's not an inconsiderate amount. I say that, but I could be corrected.
It'd be a percentage of our tuition avenues comes from the federal government.
Right.
In term, in form of pell grants, yes.
And we're not, we don't all have Greg Muesl money to send our kids.
I like this slate.
To our applicants, I guess I'll say, we do have elections every two years. Some of us might not be running next time. Some of us won't say whether we're running next year, so there are, there is an election next year and we thank each of you for your interest and participation here. It was, it was quite an impressive group. I bored my wife to tears with the new Top Gun movie. I go to sleep to it. And you get tired of that line, you're the best of the best, but it's, it's, I think I can say this, the best county in Kansas, and I'm sorry to Molly Baumgartner, who lives in Miami, but she used to live here. And this was an exemplary crowd, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm sorry if you didn't make it, but thank you for applying. Many of you, I asked myself, I know the other trustees did, and I'll be quiet now, unless somebody else wants to say something, we can move on to the consent agenda.
Very quickly, just, so every candidate will be responded to tomorrow from our office with a letter either informing them of that they received a favorable vote and they'll move forward for the interview process. In that, we also will say in that letter that it has no bearing on the decision that's made, but are making them aware in that notification of when the ACCT conference is, so they at least have that in writing in advance. And then those that didn't move forward, we'll also send them, email them a letter tomorrow, which we've been saying from the very beginning that that would go from our office, so everybody will be notified tomorrow.